This conference will now be recorded.
Six o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting to order for the September meeting, County of Cape Codaret Planning Board meeting. First on the agenda is approval of the August 3 meeting minutes that was sent out the other day. Did everybody get a chance to read it? Could I get a motion? If any, does anybody have any changes? I do not. Can I get a motion to approve? Second, everyone in favor, let me see a hand. Okay, good to go. The, Barb, you got that? Okay. Next on the agenda is the meeting minutes from the August 17 special meeting. Everybody got a chance to read those. They went out with the, with the other one. Anybody have any issues to discuss? Could I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second, everyone in favor? Barb, you good? Okay. Next on the agenda is election, is electing a chairperson, which is in accordance with our new rules of procedure that we, we adopted a month ago, we, yeah, a month ago, August. So I just want to be clear in case anybody isn't, isn't aware of the, that portion of the rules of procedure. The, the vice chair is one year and acts in the, in the absence of the chair. So does anybody want to make any nominations?
I'll nominate Bruce. It's not here.
I think that somebody has to be here in order to. Zach, could we table that agenda item until, until we've got a full, a full house? Okay, I think that's, everybody in favor of that? Good, okay. Next on the agenda is making a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners whether or not we are going to endorse favorable, unfavorable recommendations for the UDO. There's a couple of things that we need to, we need to tie in. Is a couple of things we need to talk about. Zach, do you want to, you want to pull up So there, there, there are two significant changes from, from what we have had in the past. I know we just got this final less than an hour ago.
For the, the public? Yeah.
On the computer, it's page 130. I don't know what it would be. It's probably the same you know, in your typed one, your printed copy. But that was one of the things that there's a change to. So you, you wouldn't have that yet unless you printed a copy within the last hour. Okay, so, wow, that was quick.
I got all the screen there.
Okay, so what is, let me move this here. Okay, so what's up on the screen right now is the newest version of this portion on public areas and open spaces. This is significantly whittled down from what we had in the last meeting. The, the old one has a, has a lot of verbiage in it. It talks about, it, it has a, a formula for determining the exact amount of public space that has to be dedicated when there is a new development. So it gives all of the, Zach, can you, is there, can we split screen that?
What do you want to split?
Between, from the, the one that it's being changed from.
They're saying 13.8.11 is whittled down.
This, this is, what you're looking at here is the newest change, okay? And that's why we need to discuss it because this is one of the changes, you know, that we're going to be endorsing. So in the, in the old ordinance, in this section, it gives a, a formula for figuring it out. And it gives a lot more verbiage on what if it's, what if it's less than two acres? What if it's less than four lots? What if, if it's between two acres and 10 acres, then you can just, the developer, you know, may choose to not give up a lot, but instead just give money in lieu of the lot. So there's a lot of good verbiage there that I think is valuable to, you know, to the But there was, there was some stuff that we just really didn't need and it, and it was confusing. So then Ann changed it to what we have here. And if you, if you look at, yeah, see on the left side, see, see the total, that formula, the total number of dwellings times the, times the family size? So to give you an idea, right, if you do that formula for Star Hill North, right, that's 114 homes or dwellings, times that 2.51, it would now be 2.61 because this, that's what the new census tells us. So it would be 114 homes times 2.51 times point 008, right? Times the variable density factor, right? And that's what that table is for. So for Star Hill, most of those lots are like a half acre, so that variable density factor would be point nine. If, when you do that, that formula gives you 2%, 2.06%. If you take the acreage of Star Hill and you plug all that in, it comes up to like 1.15 acres, which is basically the two lots that we have dedicated in Star Hill. Star Hill North, thank you Paxton. So that's how that works, right? If you think of how big Star Hill North is and how we got those, those two lots. So there's value in that. Now, everything that's left in town is, I think, what, what, I think the largest piece is like 23 acres, the largest parcel left that could be developed. If you, let's say we develop that as, as our 10M multifamily, right? You're talking about being able to get like 127 homes in there. So then you would have to plug that in and you would change the, the variable density factor, right, to, it's like, like point 18 acres is what that would be. So the variable density factor would be 1.6. So in, in other words, what it's doing is determining how many people are crammed into one space and how many, how many, so how many people do we need to give up parks for, right? Because we don't want to have, you know, 600, 700 more people in Cape Codaret and not have, not have a park for them to go to, right? So that's, that's the whole purpose of that. So if you go down, and there's also some real, some, some good verbiage in there as well that talks about what you take out, you know, what you count, what you don't count for roads and easements. But there is support, Zach, can you go down on the left side? To the 30%? There you go. So under C, so it talks about that the maximum that would have to be dedicated is 30%. If you do the formula, in order to get to 30%, you would have to develop 950 homes, which is not likely we're going to get 950 homes anywhere in Cape Codaret, right? If you do it at our current zoning categories. So there's, there's no value in that, in that 30%, and frankly, it made people uncomfortable because it's just more numbers and an already confusing, you know, confusing verbiage. But it does talk about there, is that, I think it's the last where it talks in, yeah, D talks about in lieu of, in lieu of land providing money to the town, right? And I, and I think that makes, that makes a lot of sense. Also, if you look on the right where, where they changed it here, the, the town may, right? So basically, if the town wants to waive it, you know, if we've got a really small subdivision, there's really no value in putting, you know, putting, you know, another little one lot.
I think that's good, at least it's to the town.
Yeah. So, so that's what we started, is on the left side, and then where we're at now as of today is what's on the right side. What I think is wrong on the right side is it doesn't, it doesn't allow you to do the computation, which I think is important. Let's say that in 2040, the golf course was sold and they wanted to develop the golf course into patio homes, right? Well, the golf course is over 200 acres. So, and if you do patio homes, now you're talking about, like, we, we could probably cram like 1,000 people in there, right? So the way that reads on the, on the right side is for the, every, for the development, there's only one lot per development, one subdivision, rather, that we could, we could, that's just, that's not going to protect the town. So I think it's important to keep some of that, I, I think it's important to keep the calculation. I think it's fair. I think it's realistic. And my recommendation would be to go ahead and keep 154.045 as it is and just remove the 30%, which is, this is, I want, I want you to understand, this has been here since before 1997. So we've had several subdivisions built with, with this ordinance, and it, and it has not Any discussion on that?
Yes, so Susan, what, and this, Ann may be able to help us with this. So in a town our size, so what is more common in a UDO? Is it one with the computation or is it more streamlined like this? Or maybe Zach knows?
So in, in, in towns around us, it, it looks more like what's on the right side, except it does not have, it doesn't say like one lot. Okay, they, there's, there's, there's neither a computation or a minimum that they have to give up. And we could do that, right? We could just take out the one lot and, and leave, you know, leave that, the 13, 8.11 and just remove that. And then the town could make a decision when, when they bring in a, a sub divider comes in, then the decision could be made there. There's got to be some direction, I think, for the town, whoever is reviewing that subdivision plan, is, there's got to be something for them to, to make a decision on.
You're saying the calculation would go in just as a guide?
Right.
If it did require some, some land to be done, that, that calculation is worthy?
Yeah, yeah. And my point to explaining the, the Star Hill North is that it makes sense, it's fair, and, and we could all kind of visualize, you know, how big a development, how many people are there and what, you know, what would have to be dedicated. so I guess that's the decision we have to make. I certainly, I, I would not endorse this favorably the way it's written on the right side. I don't think that's fair to the, to the future of the town. You know, that, you know, if we had a large subdivision go in, that, that there would only be, you know, one lot, especially if, right now, the, the current zoning categories that we have, the smallest lot is 7,920 feet, square feet. That's the smallest lot. That's about, that's about two, you know, point two acres. But I think that we also want to have the vision that if we wanted to do something like patio homes, if we wanted to do something different than what we're doing now, then we probably would need a new, you know, a new category. And if we, if that happened, then we would still have that, that guide, you know, that would.
So what are we deciding, we're deciding on the calculation?
So the, so this is the old, this is the new, and we're going to have to decide what we, what we want to do. My recommendation is either to just, is to either leave the old and take out the 30% because it serves no purpose and it, and it is confusing for, for some folks, or we go with the change that we got today and remove the one lot that, that a sub divider would give up one lot.
How many of those were started over?
114.
If you say like one lot for every 100 home sites or dwelling units, then that way if it's a major development, you could, if you're a get five, if you could get five lots or something to that effect.
Well, and that would scale with the zone.
That would be a lot more, so it would be easier to power.
Yeah, I, I think, I'm sorry, give, give me, give me the, what you just said, one, one lot per 100 homes?
Say one, one lot dedicated for each 112 units.
It would, it would probably be more like 50. Right, if the existing calculation gives us two lots for 114 homes. So basically, if we stayed with that guide, it would basically be one lot per 50 dwellings for 50, 57.
Right, which is what's in Star Hill North is to.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think it's even more streamlined.
I, I think so too, yeah.
Specifically about the, the verbiage, it says schools, parks, playgrounds, recreation, uses, fire, police, and utility substations. So I don't know, is it, is it worded like that in the, in the current?
You mean what it could be used for?
Right. It just seems like it's a lot lumped together.
Well, it's because you got to remember that for, if, let's say this was a much larger town and a, and a huge subdivision was going in, those children who were moving into those four bedroom houses are going to have to go to school someplace. So some of that land that got dedicated would be used for like a new school. So that, that's why it's written that way.
Would it be at the town's?
So how about if we, if we go, let me see where it said the one. The ratio for dedication shall be the rate of one lot per subdivision. So then I, I would change it to the rate, the, the ratio would be one, approximately one lot for 50 dwellings. And, you know, you know, at the discretion of the town.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I think that's, I think it's something, it's still keeping it pretty streamlined.
You good?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not sure from the, that could be on a major development, that would be a lot of lots. It's simply thing from a, I don't want to hinder, tell them nothing, there's a balance somewhere in there.
Right.
There is, there is.
Well, the, well, the, the balance is, is that table. You know, that's where you get that from, right? That's how it scales it. The smaller the lot, you know, the, the higher the density factor. So, so we're back to, you know, that, that formula and that table. I guess we could make, pull out the one lot and say, you know, that the, you know, say that the guideline is this formula and, and this table.
Yeah, I think the simplicity standpoint, definitely like the one lot for however many dwell units probably is the simple way. I just, what I'm wondering is 50 versus 100 and then like if, like you mentioned, was all the fairway and all that and Star Hill Golf Course is how we're developing, that's a lot of, that's a lot of acres that would be required to be donated. So without a cap on it, I mean, that could be a substantial amount of.
Well, that's why the, that's why the 30% is there. You know, we're not going to get 950 homes in there.
With all the, the neighborhood, how that 30% should, should there be a gap somewhere on that neighborhood to just to provide some?
Yeah, but we say that's a lot of homes or a lot of property to be donated, but let's just say we're, we're using the case, the hypothetical case of Star Hill, whatever it develops. We're, we're reserving that, give that to the town. Maybe because of that, that being developed, they need to put a substation, they need to put something utility like, we're, we're giving it to them for them to protect, you know, so, yeah, that's a lot, but what if they needed? Sounds like a lot just to talk about it, but it's really not. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, we've, we have, as far as, my understanding is that this has never been an issue people didn't even realize basically it was there. This came up because, because of the 30%, you know, so. But we do, we do have to protect the town, you know, from overdevelopment and not having anything left for the town, you know, for the, for the residents. If, if we want to keep it simple, then we can, we can get some, some wording in there that, that gives an approximation while leaving it up to the discretion.
Right, I think.
But discretionary isn't always good either. You know, it, you know, what if, what if somebody is not, doesn't have the vision of what, what may be needed at a later date? You know, so that, that's why, that's why I say what we have is, really meets what we
Now, in 154.045, is it written like the first part of A where the town may?
Yes.
In essence, it's giving the town the first right refusal, you say, hey, we might not. Wrong.
Yeah, and the, and the old one also provides for what if it's a small subdivision or what if, what if the developer doesn't want to give up a lot, right? Maybe a lot is so valuable to him to put a house on and sell the house and would prefer to do that rather, and, and then just wants to give, you know, money to the town, you know, that would basically be what the lot is worth.
All right, so what are we, what are we deciding here?
I'll be honest with you, I prefer the old verbiage and just pull out the, the 30%.
And I tend to think of me that way only because it is the most, right now, seems definitive. But I really haven't had a chance to be.
Well, whatever we have in this town is always going to be under 30%. There's just no place that we're going to get 950 homes. So I, I don't think that the 30% is a protection to the developer, that if they were, you know, there's got to be a cap. If they're, if they're doing a huge development with a lot, a lot of people, tons of small lots, there's got to be a cap for them. So the 30% is a protection for the developer.
Yeah, yeah, I'm obviously sort of just making sure there's a rational nexus for the action, it is, if you're tying it back to this specific public purpose and that it's something that we can justify.
Well, the old, the old verbiage does that.
Yeah, the old verbiage. If it's something you added twice, then that might be, that does add a little bit more detail and formula with it. And it's always something that if we want the old verbiage, we could go back and revisit this in the future as well.
I, I would say we leave the old verbiage and take out the 30%? I mean, if I was a developer, I would want to know that I had some protection.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
Hey, you're right that the 30% protects the developer. I think that in conversations, the 30% seems very high. So if you wanted to, you could keep all of the old verbiage and just lower the 30% cap to, it won't be, it won't be a, a greater than 5% or it won't be greater than 10%. I think 30% is a very, could be theoretically a very significant requirement to dedicate. So if you want to keep all of the other language and just lower the cap, then, then you have all of the decision-making criteria that's included, all of the detail included in the existing ordinance. And then And then also adds a lower cap to protect developers.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. What do you guys think?
I think it makes a lot of sense, but then what do you?
What do you lower it to?
Yeah, what do you, so 30% what do you make it?
I, I would say five or 10%. I would say 10% at, at the max.
So if you take, there's a parcel in town that's like 23 acres. If, if that 23 acres was developed, um, with art, R10M, that would be 4.77%. So, so that would still be under 5%.
And then if you add 5%, then you're actually not really changing that much about what you're requiring. It's just you take out this very scary 30% number.
Yeah, I think- I-
I'm okay with leaving, uh, 154, oh, four, five, the same, do the same 30%.
Now, but what I, the calculation I just gave you was for, like for the neighborhood of 25 acres. If it was, say, the golf course, that's nearly 10 times that.
Right, but it's not just the property, it's also the density.
It, it is the density and it doesn't, it, if you read through that, it tells you, you also don't consider easements and right of ways. And when I did, when I did the calculation, I did 12% to take out 12% of the overall. Um, Barb brought up a good point that, you know, in a large, a large parcel, there is likely a lot more that you could not develop, whether there is water or, or, or whatever. So, right. So I, yeah, I, I'd be, I'd be comfortable with 5%. Mike?
I think that that was put into it for towns that might have a higher density than what we have here. We have all things family, so this, the 30% would be ludicrous under any circumstance in this, this town. So, but perhaps, this is the thing, you have to think about, suppose we took some commercial section here in the triangle with significant amount of land or a section of the park or, resold it for high density. Then 30% because if you had a big park, 30, um, 40 or 50 families in it, the percentage of the park relative to the park around is that would be very high. So that's why the 30% is, I think, it seems to me like if you took the 30% out, just, we can start up like two lots at 60 feet. For a road, if Kennedy Ranch Road was ever finished, so people on their property, they help, rather than going all the way down to Park Lake or Starville. So that, that's my thought on that thing, that it was really put in there for someplace that has a high density.
And sewer, and sewer.
Well-
You can't have high density here, you have to-
Well, alright man.
Oh.
So do we need, do we need a motion to, to change that from 30 to, to five?
Yeah, I think they just make a motion to change that 30% to 5% and then to keep the same verbiage of section 154.
Okay. Sarah's gonna make that motion to just change the 30 to five. Can I get a second? Cameron, seconds, can I get a vote? One favor? Or have you got that? Okay, uh, can you bring up the, the other one?
Yeah, this is actually played up into just the, uh, part right here that talks about hike bike trails. And it said commercial shopping center developments to taking out shopping center, just having commercial developments or redevelopments where an existing multi-use trail or sidewalk exists on the other side of those development and where the use can be tied to a specific pedestrian or bicycle access. So, um, this creates the connection between the pedestrian or bicycle use and why that business would, you know, utilize a hike bike trail or a sidewalk. It says if there's a sidewalk or a hike bike trail or multi-use trail on either side, they make the connection between those two segments of the trail.
So, so in other words, if, the, the example that Zach gave me was if you think about Starbucks, right? So there's a sidewalk across the street from the Starbucks in, what building is that? That's across the street from where the Starbucks will be?
Walgreens.
Walgreens. So there's a sidewalk on 24 at Walgreens. And then, um, behind where the new Starbucks is, there is that, that trail. So this says, basically says that Starbucks gotta connect those two paths. I'm good with that. Does anybody have any? Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah. Oh, this is the same if they would, if there's, if they're there, like you said, if they're there, they have to connect it all.
What he changed it to was, the, the change was putting in commercial.
Before this, it said, oh, in vertical shopping center development, which excluded pretty much anything. Oh, so this, this makes it so that if you've got rail sections on either side and it's a pedestrian or bicycle for it to business, or that serves pedestrian or bicycle traffic, I mean, there's your round connection to why. Okay, so I'm tracking.
Okay, so it's this, it's difficult for me to wanna in, endorse or not endorse anything that I just got an hour ago. But I have been assured that those are the two substantive changes that have been made. And, uh, and I am prepared, um, you know, to vote to endorse or not endorse.
Has the steering committee seen this in the debate?
That's a very good question.
I think at this point, it's beyond the steering committee, planning board needs to make a paper for our paper for a petition.
And then, because it's already scheduled to go before the board of commissioners on Monday night. So at, at this stage, you know, this was with any input that came from the planning board. So either looking for a favorable or unfavorable recommendation so that it can proceed on to the board of commissioners. We need to get this process wrapped up.
Yeah, so I, I am comfortable with that, with the understanding that the planning board is gonna have to be very active in, in, in massaging this later down the line to make whatever changes may, may need to be made after we get the land use plan done, right? Because the land use plan is the vision, the UDO is the implementation. So, so we're a little backwards there. So we may need to go back and, and make some changes, okay? So this is not, this is what we're endorsing, um, favor, or I would, in voting to favorably endorse it, understanding that, that we may make changes down the line for, for a number of reasons. So could I get?
We just look at the table permitted uses real quick, just to, just to look at the things that we discussed at our last meeting.
I, I would say that one of the, we're gonna probably make a lot of changes to that table of permitted uses once we have the land use plan done, because we'll have a better idea of what, what should be in there. Zach, do you agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So with the Landy's plan, so, I mean, it's, it's a living document, so we fully expect we'll be doing text amendments and that's just to be expected, so.
Do we wanna minimize the need for a special use plant, a, a special use permit?
What do you mean by that?
Well, if it's not in the, if it's, if it's not in, in this table, then then, then couldn't somebody, couldn't, couldn't a, a special use plant, a special use permit be issued?
Yeah, that's how it currently reads, is that if it's not listed in the table,
Right.
then it's automatically a, a special use permit process, uh, which I think is a, a good way to kinda control some of these things that are not foreseen in the table. Um, and then people also would have the option, they could do a text amendment to add it as a permitted use to the table if they didn't wanna go through the special use permit process. But that text amendment process would have to go to the planning board and board of commissioners to be approved. Um, so there, there'd be an opportunity there to weigh in if it was gonna be a permitted use. But with the special use permit, I think that allows a pretty good amount of control for things that might not be foreseen or discussed in the table. So I think it's a, a good way to approach that.
But the planning board would recommend or not recommend to the board of commissioners? Do you remember what that was specifically about? It was about the special use permits.
Hey Zach, if you hit the bookmarks button on the left, you should see the, uh, the navigation.
Sarah, I'm sorry, what, what are you looking for? The-
We would, um, look at the land use plan and see if this special use permit, you know, aligns with it or doesn't align with it and make that recommendation to the board commissioners. I just wanted to see it, because those are things that we had discussed last time.
Yeah, in my mind, we would wanna limit special use, you know, permits because there we go. So the planning board shall review the applicant, the application materials and develop, develop a statement of consistency. I like that. Yeah, that's perfect. Uh, 42. Cameron, you have anything? Okay, so are we ready to vote? Okay, so, um, could I get a motion to, um, vote on a favorable recommendation to the board of commissioners? Sarah, can I get a second? Okay, and show of hands for a favorable recommend, recommendation to the board of commissioners? Unfavorable? Uh, Zach, can you bring up that thing I sent you? Anne, what, what Zach's gonna bring up is what you sent me today? The chart of-
Great.
The, the other input we want? So, so if you guys take a look at this, what, what this is showing is the different input methods that Summit would like to have, right? So if you, if you look at survey, we, we now have, um, a lot more surveys than, than they had anticipated needing. We, we can still do, you know, as many as we can give them, great, right? The, the issue is that we're short on vision statements, we're short on, um, adding to the map. And so-
Oh, I just, and these numbers, they're, they're made up numbers. The idea is we, we want this goal of, of 10% because so much of the plan, we rely on citizen input and, and stakeholder input. And so, you know, if the numbers are pushed around one way or the other, that's fine. But as Susan said, we've got plenty of surveys, we'll take more, but, um, but there are plenty of other ways to participate.
So if in that, in that table, what would you, give us an idea of what you would like us to focus on? What type, what type of input would you like to get? Do you want a lot, do you want, is vision statements very, very important? Is the, um-
I think, I think- Well, no, the adding to the map, the individual conversations and the vision statements are the best way to get sort of more free-form substantive input. The adding to the map is very important, especially when it comes to flooding and septic issues because the KAMA, KAMA law requires a lot of data in terms of flooding, storm surges, et cetera, but it all comes from the state. And so the, the, a better way to get even more accurate information is to actually have people add to the map. Hey, it's flooding in my yard, it's flooding on my street, um, there, you know, this dock is underwater, et cetera. So that way we can use that map to get, I mean, I, I think probably not, I'm answering your question as I'm talking, Susan. I think the map probably is the most important to get people to, to really give us good, basically crowdsourced data that's gonna be more accurate and, and help the plan be better and help keep, make better planning decisions of regarding, um, environmental issues, flooding issues, all of this. And especially as, as the next conversation in town, I'm sure it's gonna be about septic or, uh, or municipal storm or the wastewater.
Right.
So all of that is really important to get crowdsourced data from, for.
Okay, so, so that's who we'll focus on then, um, is getting that map data. Uh, we'll have to meet, um, myself and whoever is gonna be doing this. We'll, we'll have to come up with a, with a plan to get, get that kind of input because it's, I, I think that's the most difficult input to give is, is, is the map, using, using MapSocial. You know, because you gotta-
And remember also, there, there's, it's the same exact map that, that's printed out in town hall lobby. Um, and then, and then you all have, and I remember I sent you the long, long email with all the links and attachments. There's also, um, a paper version of the map and people can draw on it. We, we, whatever form you get the data back to us, we'll figure out how to put it on, on the map. But the important thing, so there, you know, they can do stickers on the town hall lobby map. They can, uh, do the map to that social, which really, once you get the hang of it, it, I had two people, um, that had never seen it before go through it today. And, and you can do it as a guest or you can register and you have to verify your email. But then it's really just clicking and entering information. So, um, if you're more comfortable with a pencil and a paper, you can do that. If you're more comfortable with stickers, you can do that, or you can do map dot social on a computer or your phone.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, that's all I have, is it, that's, and that's all that's on the- Uh, that's all I have, is it, that's, and that's all that's on the agenda. Does anybody have anything else?
I just had a quick question. People have been asking me about the lot that's cleared. Um, sort of, I think it's on Gulf and Dolphin, towards the right behind Island Pet. Does anyone know what's happening there?
It's not the boarding facility?
Yeah, I think they're getting started on the Island Pet.
Okay. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, well, the, the last thing I, I want to talk a little bit about is that we, we as a board, need to talk about our, our, our vision as well, right? So, we have to start the conversation in order to help engage people in the community. So, um, you know, just, just be thinking about your own vision, um, you know, for the, for the future. And that means, sometimes that could be some pretty crazy brainstorming, like we did that one day. You know, we talked about the beach and, you know, things like that. So, you know, kind of just, just go into like magic mode. So that when you're engaging people, you kind of got an open mind. Would you go? Okay, that's all, can I get a motion to adjourn? Second, one favor? Good night, folks. Thank you. 50 minutes, pretty good.